Howdy, everyone. Welcome to this week's City Council Recap. If you're joining us for the first time, this is a show where we recap the events of Monrovia City Council. These meetings tend to happen two Tuesdays a month. And they're very lengthy at times. So the function of this show is to just quickly recap for if you didn't have time to watch that, or attend, or see the livestream. We get in here with a panel of community members and, you know, just go through it. I'm joined today by Carmen.
Carmen Martinez, nice to meet you.
And?
I'm Jason Willoughby.
Hi. I'm Garrett Laporte. I am your host for today and first time host, so here's to that.
Can we say something real quick?
Of course.
We want to invite the community at large to come and volunteer for this. It's really enlightening and we would love to have you at this table.
Yeah, and it's also important to say is that you don't have to be in attendance at the council meeting because they can be two, three, sometimes even longer. All the city council meetings, as well as the school board meetings, are recorded through KJAM and posted on YouTube so that we can so we can see them. And part of this is going through and telling you where you can find this important information on there. So let's go.
And if you are watching this on YouTube, in the description of the YouTube video will be a link to those livestreams, whether you're watching the school district or the city council. And as Jason said, I will be going through and telling you timestamps of when you can get the full details of these events. So without further ado, let's get into it. This is the meeting of June 17th, 2025. The meeting was convened at 7:32 PM. Every single council member was in attendance. The only person absent from the meeting was our city manager, Dylan Feek. Sitting in for him was the assistant city manager, Lauren Vasquez.
How dare he take a vacation?
I know. That's fair. He's a very, very busy man and he definitely deserves vacation.
For sure, for sure.
Our invocation this week was performed by Pastor Larson of First Presbyterian Church. And then the Pledge of Allegiance was done by Mr. Spicer. At six minutes to, from six minutes to about 20 minutes into that livestream, we got into proclamations. First of all, being the Pasadena Humane Pet of the Week. This is, they brought out Helga. Yeah, Helga was a pit mix, I want to say.
Yeah, but I was, I had to stop for a second because they call her Hippopotamus or something.
Oh, well, he joked.
So I was like, my eyes had taken away from the video because I watched, I didn't watch it live, by the way. But I was like, we have a hippopotamus in the city council? So I went back and looked and I'm like, oh, it's, it's like a dog.
He's just joking about the dog, yeah. So Helga was obviously really sweet, in need of adoption, of course. This summer, we have a hot dog summer, and I believe that starts in...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just super important, free microchip clinic.
Yeah.
So if you have a pet and they're not microchipped, they're doing a free microchip. And they said lots of pets were reunited with their families after the Altadena fire because of it. I'm so sorry.
No, I was, I was actually gonna say, that was the other thing I was gonna say, that tomorrow will be the last day for that. So go to PasadenaHumane.org and you can look into getting a session or a clinic visit to get a free microchip for your pet because, you know, you never know when that pet escapes or something happens and you want to be reunited with your little furry pal. Hot dog summer, it's a fee waived for larger dogs for adoption. That's starting in July. And yeah, next, of course, today, the date that we record this actually is June 19th. And Dr. Kelly read the mayor's proclamation to be that June 19th is Juneteenth slash Freedom Day. Of course, in honor of the effect of when the Emancipation Proclamation took effect in Galveston, Texas, which of course caused a chain reaction to the liberation of the formerly enslaved in United States history. I'm a history teacher. I tingle when I hear and talk about these conversations because I love it so, so much.
Yeah.
I happen to have been gone to Galveston, Texas last October, and they have amazing history comps. So if you're ever there, there's a lot of history there and a very special anniversary for the, for the Juneteenth.
That's cool, that's cool. Then our mayor talked about on the 20th through the 26th, it's National Mosquito Control and Vector Awareness Week. Pablo Cabrera from the SGV Mosquito and Vector Control Disease District was there to speak about some strategies to limit the spread of mosquitoes, as he indicated. Mosquitoes are the most dangerous insect slash animal in the world because of the disease they carry and pass. We've had in California, West Nile and Dengue cases that have shown up as a result of mosquito bites. So he reminds us to do what?
Tip, toss, protect.
There it is. Next time, next time, next time.
And you know, it's actually really important because, you know, you look around, you sit there and go, oh my gosh, we're outside, we gotta put bug spray on. Literally just going around your, 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 your house, your apartment, finding water that is
Standing water.
Standing water that could be inside of a potted plant. It could be, you know, underneath the, the plate of the potted plant. And those are just like ovens for mosquitoes and you don't see them, little noseums. And it's a great way to, you know, be able to enjoy the outdoors and, and protect yourself as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the thing that I need more understanding is we like to put water for birds and stuff. So I believe the main thing is make sure it's not standing, so refresh it, change it. Because we, we want our, our environment to have water. We just wanna avoid the mosquitoes from it.
Yep. And as it gets hotter, the breeding season lengthens. So that's where it's like
I'm starting to get
This next week's gonna be, we got this hot weather right now, so this is a good time to go out there and do that.
All right, moving on to, there was of course, no student government report as school is out right now. So the only thing that happened that like, not only thing that happened, I should say, stepping back. What closed us out was, it was Sergio's birthday. It was Sergio Jimenez's birthday. They brought in some cupcakes. Yeah, we sang Happy Birthday and it was cool.
Yep.
Next is the order of business and we are going to discuss the consent calendar. Jason, what is the consent calendar?
So in any type of, of, you know, municipal or public hearing, school board, or, or city council, or even municipal council, there's something called a consent calendar, which is predetermined items that are just regular business items that are all lumped together. And in fact, I think that we had on this calendar, there were 17 different items that were put on the consent calendar, which include different aspects of the city. And so those are renewing contracts, those are just regular things of business, paying fees, personnel issues, all those things together that just are, are moved, that the entire council moves to consent with, and they vote with one action. And so those were passed. And it's interesting stuff. You can go back and you can look, I mean, it's everything, everything from payroll to, you know, renewing contracts with restaurants to provide food for our senior citizens. I mean, it's like
Our schools, run the action in schools, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that was a consent calendar and everything passed?
Yeah, nothing was pulled.
Right.
And, and the agenda will have item by item what was consented to. When you're at the meeting, it's usually like, okay, consenting from this to this, but you can actually read in there. So it's not secret.
For anyone who's a little bit more tech savvy, you can go on to the city's website where they actually post the minutes and agendas of the city council meetings and you can click on the consent calendar. And as Carmen said, it is all itemized. All PDFs of all of those ordinances and such are all there for you to see. So they're not pulling the wool over your eyes. They didn't pass anything in secret. It's there for you, the community.
And any city council member, after they go through the consent, has the right to pull items from the consent calendar and have an individual item, which actually happens pretty frequently.
It does.
It does happen pretty frequently. But everything for this meeting got approved on consent. Then we move to
Public comment.
So Public Comment is where you as a citizen can come into the city council, get a little, I believe it's a blue card, and you can write your name and then they'll, they can call you. And you can come and talk about what's important to you that is not in the calendar. However, the city council cannot comment on it. So if you're coming in there to, you know, sort out any problems that you have and you expect a, a response, it's not gonna happen. But it is very useful because you can come and tell them what your things are, what your issues are, what's going on with your area of the community. Like we'll see some of the items that came up on that, this last meeting.
Right. And for example, it's not always a complaint. Sometimes it's a shout out, right? And in this case, right off the bat, at 23 minutes into our timestamp here, Pastor Joel Larson got up and he talked about how the First Presbyterian Church, which is located on Myrtle and Foothill, they are replanting. They are creating a new name. It's gonna be called Monrovia Community Church. And they're gonna have on September 14th, a whole service. There's gonna be a whole bunch of events. And they were, he used his time at Public Comment to invite the community to come take a look, including the city council. So, you know, it's not always like, hey, why's my lawn blue? It's like, it's not always like that, you know?
Yeah, and, and I would really encourage everybody to go back and watch it at minute 23 because he does give a little bit of history of who, who gave the lawn and who created it and why they're changing it from the Presbyterian name to the Monrovia church. So
Exactly.
But we want to encourage you to go back and look. We don't want to tell you the whole thing.
Our next person who came to speak was Mrs. Dour, Ellen Dour. She came and talked about her feelings regarding the Gay Pride proclamation, which was, I believe, last city council meeting, not the one, not this, the 7, June 2nd. She had some concerns. In her view, this separates from what she believed was more foundational to the city of Monrovia, citing names like William Monroe, the city's founder. And she recommended that the city council consider a biblical approach to inclusion and diversity. And that was kind of that. The next, oh, go ahead.
She challenges all to not lie.
Yes, and that was her thing was to say, I urge all of the officials in the city to not lie.
But we should also urge our officials to accept everyone.
Yes.
I'm happy that we are celebrating Pride Month and it's a good thing that our city recognizes it. And I, for the last 10 years, have asked them to also fly a pride flag over the city. And I did receive, for 10 years in a row, I've done this in Public Comment. And I'm hopeful that this year, because of the things that we've seen happen in our city to some of our LGBTQ plus individuals, that it will happen. So
Can we go put the flyer up in the middle of the night?
Well, let's do things by the book.
Okay.
Okay. So then we had
Ian Mottkin, and he has been coming a few times now. And he was saying as a Jewish person that he felt sort of unrepresented by more interfaith activity in Monrovia, which I, I understand. And he's speaking more about holidays and such. For example, the one, example he brought was the parade. He was like, well, it's really Christmas coded. Can there be more inclusion? And I think that's why, of course, you get things named holiday, very, you know, open, which I think he wants to see more of an open celebration of all different faiths. Rather than, oh, well, I guess we're just here for everybody. Well, who is everybody? Eh, don't worry about it. And it's like, he's like, no, just come right out and say, we support Hanukkah, we support Kwanzaa. And I think that's, that was kind of it. And then, of course, he's had some issues with the building that he's living in, I believe, online. No, no, Olive.
Yeah, he just shared his, he just shared his thoughts on that.
And he's just sharing his thoughts. And then, Joana, Holana?
Joanna.
Joanna, Hiraswana. She's the new, did I mess that up?
Harrisuna.
Harrisuna. I apologize. She is the new executive director of Foothill Unity Center. She came to introduce herself to the council. She, you know, was talking about the organization's mission statement, talking about how the community at large has had a 37% increase in need for assistance, especially with matters of food and meals and such. She's very thankful for the cooperation of City Monrovia. And of course, as Mr. Spicer chimed in as well, there's always a need for volunteers. There's always a need to go and help. And so there's actually an onboarding app now that's gonna be put out by Foothill Unity Center to help new volunteers get ingratiated.
And I thought it was interesting is that monthly, every month, they serve up to, about 1,700 to 1,000 people in their, with, with their services, which is important. And they also mentioned that, given our current state of where we are, that that likely is going to increase
Absolutely.
because of, you know, upcoming increase in costs that we're seeing related to that.
And I volunteer a couple of times. I have to say they're super well organized. So, you know, you can volunteer for an hour or two. It just goes by really fast. So
Yeah, especially on those delivery days. They need, they need a lot of people to move that stuff around and get it organized. So, yeah, that's great. So that was the end of the Public Comment. And then we move to Public Hearings.
What would you say, what would you describe a public hearing to be versus Public Comment?
I think I got tongue tied.
I can, you want me to explain it? So a public hearing is required. So if you, anytime that you have asked the public to approve
A measure or a tax.
Or a levy or something, then every time that gets renewed, you have to have a series of public hearings. And so this was, you know, part of a public hearing in which they introduce, this, this time they introduced two different, two different public hearings, both related to levy and tax collection. One that is a tax collection that is for our, our parks and maintenance and lighting, lighting and maintenance
Lighting and maintenance.
And, and our parks.
Park maintenance, yeah.
And it really wasn't, there was an increase of 50 cents on an annual basis for our parks and no change for our lighting and maintenance. And that is what goes to keeping our city, our public areas nice. And so you have to have a public hearing. It gives them an opportunity to have anybody in the public come and share their thoughts, either for or against the, the, the tax collection. And, and then they vote on it individually. And both of these passed unanimously.
Of course.
And fiscal year for us starts on July 1st. So that's why it's the year 2526. So it's from July 1st through June 30th.
Yeah.
And the public nature of that is, just like you said, someone comes out and talks either in favor or against. And it doesn't have to be necessarily a city council member. It can be anyone from the public. Mr. Dour, who was the husband of the woman that spoke earlier, he came out and he had been discussing in prior meetings that there was, you know, lack of lighting. And so he was pleased about this tax. He was pleased. He says, however, I want to see those tax dollars at work. I want to see if we're gonna collect this tax, let's see it, you know, work. And I was like, that's cool. That's great to have that.
It's also, it's also important as, as members of our community for when it comes to park maintenance or lighting maintenance, those types of things. If you see something, our, our, our city government is really, really receptive and actually pretty quick at addressing some of those issues. And there's no way that there's enough people in the city or employees in the city to go and see everything that's going on. You know your street better, you know your park better than anybody else. If you see something that it's out of the ordinary, needs some support, contact, I mean, contact City Hall, they'll put you in the right direction.
Yeah.
It's easy and it's, yeah. Or you can go online. Actually, you can file, you can file reports, you know, online. A tree branch comes down, you know, or whatever it may be, you can go ahead and do that.
There are systems in place.
Yes, there are.
And it's very good.
Yep.
All right, about 50 minutes into our meeting now, we get into the reports of our city managers, our staff and our council. So the, as we said, Dylan was out of town or on vacation or wherever he is. And so Lauren Vasquez was there to say there was no updates on any directives this week. However, RCM 2.
That's what they were doing, right?
RCM 2.
Finally.
Canyon Park is reopening on Friday, June 27th.
Tomorrow.
We're gonna be like city council, yay! Because they were, they were cheering on and we're all cheering on. It's, it's been almost five years, I guess.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time since the fires and the floods and all that stuff. And so they started with having a, they had two different ribbon cuttings. One was actually this morning, June 19th, for local dignitaries. And then tomorrow, which is the Friday, the
Is it not, is it not next week?
It's next week.
Oh, next week, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was, I didn't say anything. I was like, okay. So it's not tomorrow. It is next week.
Tomorrow. So at June 26th, there's an invite only dignitary ribbon cutting. And then June 27th at 8 AM, the park opens to the public.
Right.
Do you want me to kind of go through some of the things that they
Yeah, yeah, go for it, man.
So starting, it's going to be open all week. Typically, in the past, Tuesdays have been closed for park maintenance, but for this beginning of the, of the reopening, they're gonna be open seven days a week. There is a no-fee registration reservation system for weekends and holidays, for Saturday, Sunday and holidays. You just go online to the city of Monrovia and you can go ahead and do that. Parking is free for right now, just to encourage people to come out there. We're honoring the pass holders that have had passes in the past. You get not only the rest of this year, but the following year as well. We're not doing any rentals of any of the public spaces because we want everybody to have a chance to see all the improvements that are going on. There's a big return of a whole bunch of events that are gonna be coming to Canyon Park, including the Fountain of the Falls run, the family hike and camp out, which is so popular. I've done that. It's awesome.
School field trips.
School tours, field trips, kids' craft fairs, all those things are all coming back. I mean, and if you've been a part of those things in the past, it's just fun.
I have tons of pictures of my kids going. They loved it. Like, I think it was third grade, maybe, that all the kids did in third grade.
That's when I saw like a rattlesnake for the first time. I was like, whoa.
So I can't wait for all the kids that couldn't go for the last five years to, to come back.
And some of the things that you'll notice when you get up there are, there's some new fencing, there's new picnic areas. There's like 30 more different parking spaces there. There's a new greenhouse. There's a new amphitheater, new restrooms, nature center is almost done, sewer improvements, water improvements, Wi-Fi improvements.
Yes, there's Wi-Fi in the park.
I'm a torn on that, right? Because you want to go to the park and go, oh, I don't have service.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna Instagram Live your entire hike to the falls?
If you fall down, you will hope you're on Instagram Live so that we can come save you.
So anyway, it's gonna be really, really exciting. Everybody's been working really, really hard. I know there is so much pride in the city, so much pride in our council and our mayor for getting this done. It's longer than we anticipated.
Way longer.
But you know what? Monrovia does things right and I think it's gonna be exciting.
But it's, it's also longer than we expected because so many things happened, right? It was the Bobcat Fire. There was those rains.
The flooding, yeah.
Yeah, that flooded. The, it just goes on and on. So it's amazing. I mean, it feels like a long time, but I think all the stuff that they've done, it's
And huge improvements to the stormwater system so that what happened with the flooding that we had before
Won't happen again ideally.
I mean, we've improved the Army Corps of Engineers' original work. So
Oh, yeah, no, it's old stuff.
And no parking fees for
Yeah, for a little while.
And we have to say all of that as well. And as Tina Cherry said, we have to say all of that is in thanks to the Rangers, the volunteers, the contractors and trail crews that all worked tirelessly these past few years to get Canyon Park back to something that the public can enjoy. And they're gonna be very excited to see all of the new things that you're, you know, you know, like as Jason said, you know, and all the bathrooms got redone too. So, yeah.
And I will give a shout out to the community. I think we all heed their advice. Nobody tried to
Yeah, we didn't hop the fence or nothing.
Yeah, we, we have all been patient. So kudos to us.
Yeah, now we're the premier park in the San Gabriel Valley. You know, it's all good. So anyway, that's exciting. So next Friday, open to the public. If you're going on the weekends, make a reservation. Doesn't cost anything. Otherwise, you don't need a reservation. You can go any, any other time.
And post pictures, whatever social media you're in. Post pictures. We'd love to see your, your adventures.
At one hour and one minute in, Councilmember Beldon gave his report. He went to a Safe Streets and Roads for All meeting. He amended a comment he made either last meeting or some meeting ago about CPA rate adjustment. He was incorrect on his initial conjecture. He walked that statement back, which I think is awesome for a council member to do. He had a very heartfelt comment about the raids that were occurring in Los Angeles County these past week or so. It's actually been
Ongoing.
Ongoing. And, you know, he's very, very disheartened at the stance that the government has been taking on immigration and that there's a lack of cohesion, you know, obviously between our state and between our federal administration and how he knows that America is a place for everyone to come here and pursue something. Well, that's what you, he said, that's what unites us all, is that we all want the same thing. He's very disheartened about that.
Yeah, it was really, really heartfelt.
As a new immigrant, I mean, I, I could go on about it forever, but I know that everybody has their opinion about it. I think regardless of which side of the fence you are, there's a better way to go about it. This is about humanity. But, moving on.
Go ahead.
So Councilmember Spicer reported shouting out the spot, which is Friday night's activities. I think it goes from 5:30 to 8:30 or 9:30 or something like that, which is in Library Park for, actually, I think it's 12 through high school.
It's middle school through high school, yeah.
12 to 18. That's going on all summer. Talked about oh, Station Square concerts.
Yeah, yeah.
A great Motown band. Talked about some reopenings of a couple new light rail stations further east of us. And, yeah, so that was basically Mr. Spicer. And then you had Mr. Jimenez, which, Councilmember Jimenez, that also talked about the cooperative event that was for local heroes, local first responders put on by Chick-fil-A. It was a really nice mixer. And then he also wanted to talk about how important our community was, came together for peaceful protesting.
Yes.
Whether it is for protesting ICE being, staying in our local hotels, being in our city and the most recent No Kings protest that was, you know, hundreds of people showed up from our area in Duarte for that. And he really wanted to make clear that Monrovians are peaceful. And I think that was really important. And we are, and we have been for all of the different, you know, work that we've done in the past.
And I'm personally grateful to all the people that went out to protest.
I still have my signs in my car.
Oh, good.
I'm ready. I'm ready to go again.
I'm gonna hide behind you because I don't want to get picked up. Okay, Father's Day, it was a Station Square event that was very good. Was that where the mariachi was? No?
Yes.
Okay, so I heard great things about the mariachi band. And then it was Kell's report.
You can take it if you want.
She called for bipartisan decency and volunteerism at the Immigration Resource Center. So obviously you'll see it was a common thread along the whole city council because this is, you know, such a big deal for us and it's impacting everybody's life. She also talked about a woman in municipal government conference, city tackling budget, how to adjust to serve the people. I, I think I missed some of her
She has a whole list of things that she's planning to talk to, to our city manager about that will probably increase some more funding that we can get for, for our city.
Right.
Which will come into play a little bit later.
Yeah, it's anticipation of what could be, you know, cuts to federal spending, federal funding. And yeah, and so she talked about that. She talked about upcoming library programs, Craft Night, Merry Cart, Book Club, Dungeons and Dragons. If you're a nerd and you want to go to the library, or if you're not a nerd and you want to find out how to be a nerd, go to the library, make some friends, it's all free. MOTAB, Monrovia Old Town Advisory Board. They just created these new welcome packets for new business owners that opened up on Myrtle. She thought it was really awesome. And then our mayor wanted to give a thank you to Fire Chief Jeremy Sanchez for going out and conducting something that we will be talking about in a few minutes. She attended the Race Unity Day for the Behides of Monrovia at Rec Park. At this event, they honored the Jones family, which was actually a video that KJAM put out recently
Yes, it was.
under our, a local producer, Sandy from the Historic Society. And she helped make this video, which was a documentary about like the Jones sisters and their whole family. And that video blew up. That video has like, something like 85,000 views.
I think it was 92 this morning.
Yeah, it was crazy.
Yeah, yeah. So that's great. So then we move into, like move into the admin reports?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in this one, these are, these are individual items that are kind of pulled because they need to have individual votes. And there were two, two admin reports. One was around our, our budget for the next two years, our city budget for the next two years. And the other one was updated our responsibility, our fire hazard severity map. So there is a whole bunch of numbers in the budget. And if you are a numbers person, you can go to the link, you know, below the, the screen that you're watching and you can access all of these reports. You can see the PowerPoint. You can actually see the reports that came through. I don't think we need to go into much detail with the actual numbers.
Right.
But what I did hear is that our financials are sound and that we are And, um, that we are, um, what we're spending is what we're, our, what we're receiving and that we have good projections moving for the next two years. Um, they, it was unanimously, um, approved.
Yep.
I, I, I love what Mayor Beckley said, that, uh, Mickey, Mayor Beckley. I'm putting her first name and last name together. But what she said, that it's a moving document. So, and she appreciated how quick the, uh, people that are in charge of this bring up whatever issues are to their attention so that they can do a correction or it changes. So it's nice to know.
They never know what's gonna come up, right?
Right. So I know, I, I think it's nice to know that it's a living document.
Yep.
So, and shout out to Buffy Bullis and her entire team for, you know, really making it simple to understand, but also really, really detailed for those who need, um, to have some of those details. So, check that out. The other one was um, from, um, Chief Sanchez, our chief of the Fire Department, Monro- Monrovia. And, um, it is an update in April of this year, the state of California started in Northern California, went all the way south and took a look at all of the different, all of the areas, the residential areas, and moved from what used to be a high, you were in a high fire, um, risk zone to no fire risk. They actually changed it and it's very high, high and moderate. And where it used to be in Monrovia, Hillcrest, if you go all the way across, um, the city, all the way to Norumbega, um, above Hillcrest was considered to be, um, high fire, uh, danger zone. It still is, but it's creeped a little bit further south. And then we have some, um, high and moderate as well. And um, in all this resources, they actually do provide what that map looks like. Um, so I just went in and printed it off so you can actually, you know, get a close look at it. We've also seen it on social media.
Right.
It's been out there a little bit.
Monrovia now is where I saw it on social media, but you could go to the city website and pull it up. There's a lot of, um, places that you could pull up the information. The state has a website for it. Um, you know, I, a lot of you guys know I'm a Realtor. I sold a house in December that was a non, non-fire zone. Now in April, it is. And so you have to go and look and see what you have because if you, a month ago, it was not, today it might be, is gonna impact your insurance, unfortunately.
Especially when you're refinancing or if you're updating your insurance. Uh, we've, we know that there's insurance people that are going out and taking pictures of things. And so, not to get everybody too freaked out who lives up there, but it's a reality. I mean, we know what's happening.
The other thing they talked about is that there's gonna be a lot of, uh, educational information. So you want to know, you, you want to find the education. You want to know what should be away from your house, what you should do to, to make it uh, less of a risk. They talk about a video that they didn't show that there were two houses side by side. One had bushes, I think, and the other one didn't. The one that had the bushes close to the house, it burned down to the ground. The other one stayed up. So there's a lot of things we can do and, and, you know, I, I, I've never been asked to leave a property because of fire until this January.
Right.
And it was a mistake. But that fear that you get, even though you know what to do and you know what to take, when they ask you to leave, it's, it's just not nice. So education is key.
So there's a, yeah, education is key. There's a lot of information. This is just getting rolled out, but there are ten steps for being safer um, to, which I do think that it is tied closely to, um, insurance. And some of those things, I'm not going to go into too much detail because we don't have time. But one, you need to have a class A fire rated roof. You need to have ember and fire resistant vents.
That's a big one.
Yes, uh, enclosed eaves, um, non-combustible six inches at the bottom of exterior walls. So outside the house, um, the six inches have to be non-combustible. So there needs to be something like a cement or a stucco.
Right.
Um, upgraded windows, defensible space compliance. So defensible space, um, depending upon where you are, there has to be larger defensible spaces in the very high and high versus the moderate. Um, cleared vegetation, weeds and debris from under decks. Uh, removal of combustible sheds and other buildings within thirty feet of a household.
Right.
Um, five-foot ember resistant zone, including fencing. Um, uh, our mayor had some important questions about that because that is could encroach upon a lot of the stuff that we have around our, around our homes.
Right.
Um, and then finally, the Firewise USA and Fire Risk Reduction Communities. That's when groups of people that live in the same community all come together and they agree upon how to implement these insurance, uh, it, it, um, how to be safer. And because they all agree and they do it, then they get a discount on their insurance.
Which is what we all want.
This is all we want. So there's more information, ten things right here. Uh, you can find that. That was.
It's like an HOA meets a rebate?
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, but it is, it's working together.
And we don't want you to go out and get rid of all the trees. We still need trees.
Of course.
But we want to.
We need oxygen.
We find a way to, to be happy together.
Yeah. So anyways, there are more, more to come, more education on that. But that's at the, what minute was that?
That was pretty much right at the end, almost to the two hour mark. Hour fifty.
Hour fifty.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that was a pretty lengthy, uh, meeting full of some dense, important things. Lots of important sentiments were echoed. Um, I want to thank you both. Uh, and this is my first time hosting and I'm glad I was sitting next to both of you because it's a lot. But, um, yeah, no, this is very, very cool. And we want you, okay? Um, I, like I said, I'm very privileged to be sitting next to these two people. And I'm going to say that this show is not limited to just experts, okay? Because these are definitely my.
Can do with us.
Yeah.
So there's a seat for you here. So if you want to reach out and be a part of City Council Recap or School District Recap, please send us an email at kjmtv@gmail.com. That's kjmtv@gmail.com. And please, uh, reach out. Don't forget to check out all of KJ's other videos. Uh, be sure to subscribe. And yeah, um, thank you, guys.
Quick shout out.
Yes, you may.
It's my husband's birthday today. So, happy birthday to him.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Everybody have a happy Juneteenth to everybody. Um, we're filming on that and a upcoming Fourth of July. Um, and all those things. Be safe out there.
Yep.
Fun summers.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. We'll see you next time.